Recording in progress.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. We'll start off with a roll call. McKee here.
Here.
Batoma is about to be here, here it sounds like.
Who believes that?
Veronkamp?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Perfect. We'll go right into it on code enforcement review and priorities for 2022.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are here today to talk about code enforcement. Just background of code enforcement within the city of Corcoran. We have had code enforcement activities for many years. Prior to 2019, code enforcement was mostly complaint-based. Complaints were received by the public and then inspected, and citations were issued or warranted. Beginning in 2019, code enforcement began to be proactive. So that meant conducting citywide street-by-street reviews, so sweeps of different areas for code enforcement. Generally, council provided some targeted priorities, and then citations were issued. Complaints were reviewed if we received any from the public and acted upon if there were violations. In 2021, proactive code enforcement was paused and moved to complaint-based. Violations that were currently in progress continued then, and then complaints from the public since then have been taken and acted upon. So that's a bit of background of how, of code enforcement in recent years. Currently, the city contracts with landform for our services, and our current budget for code enforcement in particular was $30,000 last year, I believe, and remains similar for this year. So really, that's a bit of the background of the program and currently how it's run. We have had, because we've had a few different approaches in the past, we'd like to get some feedback from council on what our priority items are for policy. Really, which direction do we want to go? Do we want to continue to be proactive? Do we want to, or do we want to continue to be complaint-based, I should say, or go more proactive or somewhere in between? So really, wanted to get some feedback from council on what that would look like. We could, if we decided to tailor a program, we could have multiple, look for multiple violations. We could look for tall grass and weeds, signs within the right-of-way. All three of those listed up there currently are things that we've had targeted in the past. Very specific code compliance issues. So we could look at something like that, or we could look at something, something, a different topic within code to target for this year's code enforcement budget. And so really with that is just a discussion of council on where we want to go if we want to continue the complaint-based as we are today, or if we want to change that, our program, and come up with any different priorities for us for 2022 as we. Now that the snow has melted, although it is snowing, or has been snowing today, it's hard to say. But we're really at the beginning point of starting any activities that we would now that you can have access to see property again without snow cover. It's really a good time for us to look at where we want to go.
Makes sense. Thank you. Anyone want to start us off?
Sure.
John has some thoughts too, so we'll just make sure to not wrap up before he's here, if he's coming.
That'll be up to him, to some degree though, too.
Yes.
I would say I see a lot of obstruction violations and a lot of construction debris violations in the areas where we have a lot of new construction. And given, my philosophy is usually focus on the biggest issues first. And because we do have so many areas that are undergoing construction, I would say that should probably be one of the focus areas is patrolling new construction developments and make sure that they're adhering to the major points of code. You will see things like house wraps blowing into wetlands and things, blowing out of dumpsters. You'll see people stacking pallets of wood on the sidewalk, or pallets of truck tires or porta-potties even. And it seems like that would be a really good use of somebody's time versus patrolling rural areas where you might see, you know, one property every mile or two.
Does some of that get picked up, though, in our actual building code enforcement? Don't we have inspectors that are going out and looking at buildings? Can't they do some of that as well?
Generally, as of right now, that's not something, generally, they're doing inspections and not necessarily code enforcement inspections like that. That might need to be a change to our contract with Metro West.
Okay. So it's Metro West doing?
Metro West does that portion. And so to Jeremy's point, if we could utilize our landform, the money we have set aside from landform to do the monitoring for that, or have our folks who are on-site doing engineering reviews, that could potentially do that.
I think we talked about a different option, because what, Metro West is building inspection and this is not building inspection.
Yeah.
Certainly, we can talk with them, but we also, I think, Jess reminded me if I'm mistaken, but I think we talked about having our inspectors from STAN-TAC
Yes.
expanding their scope of work.
Yes.
Because that is not part of their scope of work either, but they're on-site regularly and making that part of their scope was another option.
Is another, is one of the options that we could look at is expanding that scope and giving some budget to manage that.
Well, do we, how far do we have to expand that scope? I mean, can't we just ask them to make general observations and report that back to the city staff when they come in and give feedback on what else is going on in the project?
I think we like.
Yep. No, we're good. We talked that way.
I think at DRC, which is our Development Review Committee, our staff meeting on Wednesdays, I believe our thought process was if the inspectors are out there, which they're inspecting on the developer's escrow for things like stormwater management and things like that, that certainly we could identify things in the stormwater pond that are a violation that need to be corrected. It's not something they do now, and that's what I meant by expanding their scope of work. It's just not something they're looking for and flagging, but that could be something, I think, that they added to that. So it's not about budget as much as just identifying that we want them to be doing that and figuring out how to be efficient about that.
Yeah, and I think that can go beyond just STAN-TAC too, right? We have law enforcement that's driving up and down these roads all the time. I mean, it's not hard for them to say, hey, by the way, there's a lot of garbage out there along Pleasant Parkway.
Even just add it as a checklist to STAN-TAC, I don't know what the police would have, but just that general view of the landscape or the horizon shot of, goodness, look at all the trash and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, people, when they drive to town, they don't go through with blinders on saying this is my focus is, right? Even maintenance workers, when they're out doing stuff, they see stuff.
So I'm kind of envisioning a workflow where you might have, like, identifying issues, kind of the entry to the funnel. And anybody could do that, to Alan's point, that could be a police inspection or whatever. At some point, you've got to collect that.
Right.
And then take action based on it, whether it be, you know, a letter to the developer or whatever that next step is going to be.
Yeah.
Who would do that part of it?
That I would envision landform.
Okay. So the other functions would feed somebody at landform who would do the administrative side. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a lot of that, and it does blow far beyond what's the current building site, you know?
I know Dayton had a pretty similar conversation at their last council meeting on Tuesday. So we can maybe keep an eye on what they're doing and follow suit. It's not like they're in kind of the same problem with specifically construction debris and stuff in new development.
Maybe we try our approach for a month and then compare notes with them and see who's getting better results too. So we don't have to wait for them.
Makes sense.
In our quarterly update that gets, goes to everybody and stuff, do we have a subject line or a couple of subject lines about, obviously, the visual side of stuff, tall grass weeds, I know I've read that in a past one, signs in the right-of-way? Have we, have we taken care of that new signage ordinance related to the developments and stuff like that?
Think, there's been progress for sure.
There's been a lot of progress.
Their extras.
Fully compliant.
We're working on the sign piece, but certainly if you're, we could try to put out more information about if you see violations, let us know, or talk about what violations are so people know what to look for. We could do an education piece if that's what you're.
That's, that's the way I'm going, is I don't want all of a sudden, everybody look for trash. Everybody look for multiple vehicles in the front yard. Make sure you drive in and check their license, make sure they're up.
Yes.
I mean, you wouldn't, before I got appointed, or when I got appointed, that was the first thing I did on my property, even though I'm 300 yards away. For somebody to see any violations on mine, they got to come down my driveway. Well, I'm pretty sure I'm good, but we don't have that much commitment and awareness from a lot of our rural folks. I mean, there's a number that I drive by and I just cringe, but what I, what I've done at, one of them is I just have stopped and I said, because they're a friend, I said, you realize that this is a mess? If we were doing full-blown code enforcement, there would be problems right now. And what do you mean? I didn't know there was any ordinances and stuff like that. Couple of weeks later, everything cleaned up. Might have went to the backyard and I haven't seen it since, but I just, that's the direction I want to go. On the rural side is out of sight, out of mind for me. If it's in the backyard, I don't care. For living in residential, I mean, living in your guys' neighborhood, I'd be all over trash piles, heaps, chunks of wood, lumber, all that stuff. Probably the only thing I wouldn't be freaking out about is somebody had, what is their ordinance on wood piles? Can't be anymore, four-foot tall, those kind of things. I would ignore that because that's maybe their main source of heating and stuff, but I don't know anybody just burning nothing but wood in Ravinia. You ain't got a log pile out back, do you?
Not yet.
Jeremy? I just, I don't, I don't want to go crazy.
I agree with what you're saying a lot.
And I think it's something that our friends at landform and STAN-TAC and all of these people, they've got a lot more things to look at than some of that noise and.
Right.
So maybe one thing we could do is set up, we talked about there's multiple sources of input for this. Maybe we just set up an email address, and when people are driving through, they can just send photos to that email address, and that can be the input for whoever the landform person is to do the letters and so on.
And we do have a code enforce, code enforcement at corcoran.mn.gov. So that's something we could, could certainly, you know, let people be aware of, that that's an option for that. I think one of the questions, though, one of the things we want to make sure that we're being aware of is if, if we're made aware as staff about an issue, someone doesn't want to ruffle the feathers of their neighbor, but they want us to be aware, they'd like us to move forward, but under a complaint-based system, we, we don't have a complaint, so we wouldn't necessarily move forward. So I think one of the clarifying questions for, from council is if, if we get made aware of an issue, we'd like to probably go forward and, and at least look into it to see if it really is, is an issue. Is that something that we'd be, the council would be comfortable with if we stick with a somewhat more complaint-based system?
And for me, if you're made aware, that's a complaint.
Okay. Okay. So that, that's, see, that's good, really good information to know from our perspective. I think there's just some clarification on what does that, what does a complaint mean? If we're made aware of violations, I think that we'd be doing our best for our residents if we at least look into it.
Yeah.
If complaints are filed via that email, are they, are they protected?
So complaint data is protected to, is, is under data practices as non-public data. However, if it gets to be a certain point in the process, legal process, if their, if their attorneys would seek out that information, they might be able to get access to the complaint. They may be able to get access. I can't guarantee that they would. It a little bit depends on how the process would work, but in general, complaint data is, is not public data.
Makes sense.
So there's no way to make, there's no way to make a statement that a complaint is anonymous?
You certainly could make a complaint anonymously.
You could either call.
We have had people called.
Via the email though, right?
Could probably not be a.
Right. So you can't provide documentation to support your argument?
Well, you get independent evidence based on the tip, right?
Yeah.
So you'd have the input that tells you, okay, this is a problem.
Right.
And you send somebody out to take a picture of it, and then that becomes the basis for whatever the next step would be.
Right. If you can catch the individual and you act in many cases, depending on what it is, right? So.
Which we have to anyway. We can't go, so.
Right. You can't make an assumption.
Yeah, we can't, we have to be able to visually, visually see it ourselves as staff and document it. Unfortunately, if people send in photos, we can't say that we've seen it. And again, I just think about, we hope we don't go to court, but if we go to court, it has to be the person that stands there and says, yes, I was out there and I took that photo and I saw that. So that's, I mean, we're happy to take those as an idea of what we should be looking for. It's still helpful if residents are listening, that's still helpful to us. If we're doing code enforcement, that my neighbor, sometimes we get these things about my neighbor's chicken coop is unfinished, and I don't like looking at it. Well, I can't see his chicken coop unless I come on your property. So if you send me a picture, that's, I can see you're right, but until I can go on your property to take a picture, I can't do anything with it. Because I have to be able to look from the public street or get approval from you to be on your property.
So maybe one of the things as we're talking about doing something with education would be outlining those kind of things for folks to know what we can, what, if we, outlining the basics of code enforcement that we might have, that if you do want to make a complaint, we do, what we're limited to do is either see it from a public street or get approval from an adjacent property owner.
Yeah, I think you need to outline some form of instruction on how people can remain anonymous, right? Because that's the thing, is they want to complain in a lot of cases, but they don't want their neighbor to know that they're the one making the complaint.
Yeah.
And how can they provide that?
Create an anonymous email address.
Yes.
It's a little more work than more citizenry want to do.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes. So.
What, what do we do right now? And I might be going a step further. What do we do right now with a complaint? Somebody complains about, and I can think of five properties in town that are just absolutely. Do we let them know they're out of compliance? Do we give them, here's what we recommend you do to get into compliance? I mean, some of them have got multiple automobiles and other things on the property and stuff. Hey, call Cash for Clunkers. I know we can't advertise like that, but I just, there's people that will come and help you recycle that stuff and help you clean up. I don't want to, I don't want to volunteer our Public Works group, but can, what can Public Works do? I mean, we've got Cleanup Day coming in May.
Sure.
I don't think Public Works or we've turned anybody away on stuff they've brought here, right? We've loaded everything up in dumpsters and.
So, so.
We buy charge and stuff, but.
Yes.
I just, what do we do when it's all of a sudden there's a complaint? Do we just say, you're out of compliance, you got 30 days to do this? You don't do it in 30 days, you get two more weeks and then we'll come in and clean it up and charge. I mean, what do we do?
Sure. So a general process would be we, we issue, we've talked about, we're working on doing an initial, a slightly softer first letter, and then coming up with a second citation letter that doesn't move forward. Ideally, in an ideal world, they take some action. If they're making action and making progress, we'll continue to work with them. If, for whatever reason, they don't take action and don't appeal to the city council, then we bring it forward to the city attorney for, for charging. But generally, if they're making some sort of steps towards that, that's the most important thing for us. If you have six violations and you can, and you have a timeline, an estimated timeline, that's really helpful. In the middle of winter, it's hard to move, to move certain pieces of equipment. So we are reasonable for that. In terms of Public Works and what our, our staff can do, at a certain point, if things are not abated like weeds, we will, we have not.
We go in and maul, right?
We will have gone in and mowed.
And then send them the bill.
And then we do charge that if it doesn't, if we don't get the bill paid, we do have it, we will assess that to the property. So that's a little bit for that. In terms of going in and removing a junk vehicle or something like that, we do have some sort, we have some authority, but likely, we try not to go that direction.
We don't want to do that. When we take, and Alan might be the only one who's on the council, when we talked about the nuisance ordinance last time, when we go onto somebody's property and take that off, whether it's a junk car or something, the city has to hold that for.
Right. No, yeah.
And there's a cost to that, and then there's a time for them to be able to get it back, and it gets very expensive very fast. So our attorney recommended we not abate anything except the weeds.
Got it.
Because there's a liability for the city.
What about construction debris?
If that blows on your yard, it's yours.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, if it's in the right-of-way, around the sidewalk.
Well, I think if it's on, if it's.
In my case, it was mine for that.
Yeah, this was specifically going to go on someone's property, but if it's on public property, I think that's a different. I suspect, I haven't asked, but I suspect that's a different answer.
Okay. So like.
Jess has been more involved in that, so.
How much of that property is the city's? Do we usually have a 10-foot right-of-way beyond the edge of the street, or?
So it depends on what part of the city we're talking about. In any area that is, is platted, we generally have right-of-way. If we're talking about streets that have been here for a long time, like Willow and Larkin, we, we might not have a, an actual right-of-way other than prescriptive right-of-way. And so it, it varies a lot is the, the challenge with.
Well, if we haven't taken control of the street either, we don't have any control of it either, right? So everything in Ravinia has not been assumed by the city.
Well, portions have.
Portions have.
Everything, right.
But mo, but.
For which streets?
A few of the streets, a few of the first couple additions have been. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because we're plowing that portion of the road, so I believe.
You can tell which ones are city and which ones are not.
Yeah.
Yes, so we, we have a limited scope, and Kevin would know the exact number of additions that have been accepted, but most, to your point, most of the, the new constructed areas are not, have not fully been accepted.
Yeah.
So what does that mean in terms of the city's ability to remediate if there were a problem?
I think it depends on if there is a life safety issue. That's one of the things that Natalie and I have, and Kevin have talked about along, along Maple Hill Road. We had some concerns about some materials in the right-of-way, and we were looking at options for that. But I, I know that there are potential options. It might just, it might be something we'd have to tow and keep is the challenge, depending on what, what it is to Kevin's point.
And those neighborhoods, wouldn't the HOAs also be on top of a lot of that stuff?
I don't know. Because for the first X number of years, it's controlled by the builder anyway, so there's not a lot of incentive there.
But longer term, I guess longer term, the city, the road would be turned over to the city as well.
Yeah.
With regards to complaint letters, the ones I've seen in the past have always been the clearest. So I think we need to make sure we're clear on that, and then if there's multiple complaints, they all get stated on the initial letter. So that if they get a follow-up letter, there's not a second complaint listed that wasn't listed on the first.
We can, we can certainly look at how we can improve that process too.
Because that seems to turn a lot of ire from people.
I think we're hopeful that the new software will be better. So the software we have now is police, I call it police software. So it's written like a citation. It's not at all soft.
Yeah.
It's very, you know, I imagine getting a letter like that feels pretty aggressive.
Right.
But we do try to say, this is the violation section, and then we do try to add a section that says, here's how you need, what you need to do to correct it. But I'm hopeful.
We are hopeful that we're, we're in the, the building stage of that portion of the software that we're working with Nicholas from Landform and Natalie to, to make that language and that, that portion of the software work smoothly. And our hope with the software is to allow us to track everything really nicely for us as well.
Is that BSNA?
BSNA is, is one of, is one of the components of the larger software system.
So, so for the, the things that are really egregious to me would be like if there's multiple violations or violations that affect public safety or, you know, if there's a long time span that people have been in violation and they're aware of it. Somebody came in and talked about getting a complaint about a pile of sticks that they hadn't burned because, you know, we were in the middle of a burning van. To me, that's why I understand there's probably a rodent component to it. It's not, it isn't very egregious.
Mm-hmm.
I think I've said it on other occasions, that I think you could just go about every house in the city and find some violation if you really wanted to look for it.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah, I think systemic issues and high-density areas that have multiple issues should have the lion's share of the focus and kind of be proactive.
Safety stuff, safety is not really a question. It's a safety issue that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and I mean, there's, there's definitely properties in rural areas that are probably as bad as some in more urban areas, but because the homes are more spread out, I wouldn't put as high of impact on that personally.
Yeah, I'd agree.
I mean, it's, that's kind of subjective for a code enforcement person. It makes it hard, but.
Kind of goes to what Dean was saying of the out-of-sight, out-of-mind.
Right.
Yeah, and again.
Then it comes to a complaint-based, right?
The ones I know of, you don't have to look hard, even in the backyards, there's piles of things.
And on those ones in particular, if we can't see it from the public street, it would be unlikely that we would.
Right.
Yeah. Only way you would, like Alan was saying, is if a neighbor made a complaint about it.
Yeah.
And that's always been a way of handling this, so.
Yes.
On, back to like developments and developers and building, like Rush Creek and stuff. We issue so many building permits. When they come with the next requirement of building permits, is there something there we need to walk through or you need to clean up before we issue more building permits and stuff? I know we did that with Trevini on Dirt Mall or Dirt Piles and stuff like, you're not doing anything until you get your conformance. I still believe strongly that the builders, the home builders, the people doing it for all of these places can clean up their site every day. In the last 20 minutes of their day is cleaning up, tacking down, tivec, doing things. I mean, with the wind again, we're back to, as I drive by Rush Creek every day, we're back to flapping in the wind and it's a mess again. And is there, is there a way that you can put that, we can put that stipulation in with the developers or these properties? Or is that something that needs to go in the original, the original developer's request that you will keep, you will keep your area neat and clean on a daily basis, as weekly, as a monthly now? Do we have any meat and potatoes to those agreements right now?
The other side to think about could be at the backend, when you issue the certificate of occupancy. Maybe you can't do it on building permits, but can you at the end of the process?
I think that would be much easier to be able to do at the end of the process. I mean, construction sites, by their very nature, are messy. There's a lot of stuff going on. But yes, I think as part of the, I can look at the language in the development contract. We can make that part of the pre-con that Kevin has with all. We can make that part of the pre-con that Kevin has with all developers before they get started in each phase, that that's our expectation. I think it would be hard to hold a permit for Tom because Jeremy's site is in violation. So tying it to the permits might be hard, but to be able to say, but you don't get to move in until you clean up your lot and tying it to the CO seems easier and something worth looking into.
Follow-up issue with that is when it blows to somewhere that's not another lot, when it blows to the wetland or in a pond or to neighbors who's not in the development's property and their trees and stuff like that, then what do you do?
Yeah, that's, that's my biggest concern. All of our property owners to the other side of 116 here, they're catching a lot of things from Rush. And then the one neighbor to the south side of town, he's picking up number of items that are blowing across the road into his property. He's not complaining about it, other than me.
Right, but I mean, I think it's fair to be frustrated.
And there's times where I'll stop on 10 and pick it up before Bob gives me a call and says, hey, another thing blurred across the street. I just, I take it home, throw it away. I just, it frustrates me. I've seen responsible builders clean up on a daily basis, button things down and those kind of things. These are national companies that should have some type of premise that doesn't. Even in our 60 mile an hour winds, we've had three of those events this spring. And if they did, they, they need to be responsible for keeping it clean.
Or is there a way, because I think on the backend with certificate of occupancy, if that's tied just to one specific property, that doesn't keep everything's in construction in compliance? Is there like a weekly audit mechanism? And maybe we have to change the ordinances to create fines for repeated violations that aren't corrected, something like that.
Yeah, and that would be definitely something we'd have to look into because I, I'm not sure where, what exactly we could look at doing, but we certainly could at least explore that.
I think we'd all be open to seeing what options we have there.
I do think though, starting immediately while we explore that, making sure that's part of our, we're, not we, I'm not there, but engineering is having weekly meetings with these developers about the status of projects. And whether it's Kevin or Rowdy, I think that can be part of the conversation about our expectations is we're exploring how to enforce this, but our expectation is you have somebody who cleans up at the end of every day. I have a job in Albertville right now. It's a huge manufacturing facility and our inspectors were out there the other day and they're like, I was so excited because the, the general has two people, at 4:30 they walk around the site to make sure everything's cleaned up. So it's smaller site than some of these, but it's very much easy to manage with the crews, I think. But we need to set the expectation. So I would be hopeful that making that part of that conversation immediately could see some resolve. But we have to have an enforcement tool that I don't know how to do.
We could certainly look into options, whether it's, what other options are available, what we're seeing in other cities and what, if the city attorney or city's having this.
Like I said earlier, maybe reach out to Dayton and see what they're thinking of doing.
Is it one of those things too, when we come in in phases? Phase number four is coming up. We are rewriting our expectations that you will clean up. Because a lot of these big places are multiple phases and as they come to us, we just reinforce the neighbor, good neighbor expectations of keep your sites orderly and clean.
Can, can we write it into a development plan?
Well, that's what I, I made myself a note. I got to look at what the development contract actually says today because I think it has something in there already. And I think what happens though is we don't talk about it with them at the pre-cons and at our weekly meetings. I actually think it's in, I don't have a development contract.
It may be there, that's, that's the words I was talking about is development plan.
I mean, because we could, we couldn't, couldn't we use their letter of credit to, to pay for mitigation essentially?
We, we certainly could use whatever their surety would be to do so. So we happen to actually have a, a development contract on the table, so we'll look through that.
Cool, thank you.
As far, as far as signs in a right-of-way, I mean, they do get really annoying when you see all these window cleaning signs and advertisement signs, you know, little placards that are up and sitting up for months at a time on our street corners and nailing them to foam poles and whatnot. I mean, I would love to see those gone. I have no problem with somebody posting, they're having a garage sale or they lost their cat, but to advertise.
Two months later though, that bothers me too.
Yeah, and they're sitting there on our street corners for months, right? And then they blow into a field, then a farmer tills them under and it just becomes a mess.
Only problem is it can't, don't we have to be careful when we're getting into the content of any sign?
It would be, yeah, so we would be looking at streets, signs just within the right-of-way. So it would, we would take any signs related that are commercial or non, probably non-commercial up until close to the election time. And the only time we could do anything with this, signs within the right-of-way during campaign sign, or during the campaign season is within the right-of-way as well.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about campaign signs, I'm talking about the commercial signs that we see everywhere. Even the parade of homes and the weekend signs where they go up and they flood our corners on a Friday night, you know, and they pick them up on Monday is annoying. And those, I wonder if they're even a public safety issue because they put them right in the site triangle.
There's a ton of them.
And I mean, I would have no problem with public works going out and yanking those things.
The ones that drive me crazy is they put four up for the same fellow, right next to each other.
Right next to each other with the same arrow.
There's a wall.
I saw one for Ravinia. It had to have been, I don't know, four cities over, I don't even remember where I was. But it's, it made no sense why it was advertising for Ravinia on the complete other side of, of the suburbs. But that's neither here nor there. Yeah, so is there any other big items?
Yeah, I, I think from what I've heard, we'll continue with complaint-based with knowing that we might do some sign, some sign enforcement if we're comfortable with that. And then as we have folks out in the field looking, or if, if anyone sees any violations that are egregious or multiple, we can do that, we'll look at working with construction debris and monitoring that and seeing what we can do with that with our folks in the field. And then looking also at high-density areas is really kind of what I, what I heard today. So I think, I think we just really want to make sure.
Let's, let's call it established neighborhood instead of high-density, just to get us off of whatever hook and.
High-density, when I said that, what I meant is high complaint or high incidence.
High density of complaints.
Some of our neighborhoods aren't high-density per definition.
Yeah, absolutely.
We should, we should just call it established neighborhoods or.
I would also emphasize cases where sidewalks are blocked. Because that should be considered a safety issue.
Is there any thought to like tiering ordinances based upon like a, a level of, you know, not a level of complaint, but on what we find most offensive? And then having, having sweeps focused on those? I mean, how did we, how did we deal with sweeps in general in the past? But did it just everything you saw, you wrote it down?
Yeah, so I think we, you can identify, and, and we have said, we're going to be looking for tall grass. And that's what we're going to sweep the first two weeks of June. Or junk vehicles are the thing we're looking for. So, but what happens is if we go to a site and we see junk vehicles, but we also see tall grass and we also see garbage, we're going to flag all three of those. It got flagged because of that, but you could prioritize that, I'm only identifying complaints if it's got a junk vehicle, for example. You, you absolutely could do that. I think the reality is the most problematic sites in town we all know of and we get complaints about every year. And, you know, I think if you want to prioritize one of these that, that are notified here, we absolutely can sweep that way. Absolutely, cities do that. They'll say, here's a newsletter article, we're going to get rid of all the junk vehicles this year. That's our goal and we're going to have code enforcement staff looking for that. And then we wouldn't flag a yard that just had tall weeds. Well, weeds we would probably because weeds are a bit of an anomaly. But if they just had a bunch of junk, we would just drive by.
Yeah.
So if that was the direction of the council, that's what we would do.
Are there, I remember a couple of years ago when I was outdoor knocking, there was somebody who told a story about a property that had issues for five years with multiple junk cars and narcotics issues and police came regularly. Is there something that we could do when there are cases like that? To have a remedy where the city could go in and clean up? I don't know how common that is, hopefully that doesn't recur. But it does seem like there should be a way for us to handle those kinds of persistent issues when we can't get cooperation.
Yeah, that is the case I was talking about where our city attorney has said, we do not want to do that because of liability issues. Legally, could we go in after numerous violations, there's a process you have to go through. But there's several in town that have been in court since I've been here, I swear, 20 years ago. And it doesn't get better. You could go in, the problem is this, you then have to rent a space for all of what we consider junk and they consider treasures, and then there, you have to work through the process and they get a chance to then, I think buy it back, I'm not exactly sure how they get it back. But now we, as the city, have to rent space to store that.
I mean, you have to inventory everything we take.
Yes.
Every, every little scrap piece of pipe.
The answer is yes, but it may not be worth the, the liability and the cost to the city. Because I, as I recall, John said, we don't have a way to collect that at the end of the day. That's the cost of cleaning it up.
So is that state law that binds us that way? There's something we can do with an ordinance to deal with that?
I think he wrote a memo when we did the nuisance thing.
Look at it.
That we might want to pull and share with the council. Because I'm, I wasn't prepared to talk about this, I don't remember the exact details of it.
I can, I can certainly send that out to, to council.
I think that was 2018.
In terms of potentially doing something, you were saying Alan, of prioritizing or ranking disparity? Do we want to like, you and Jeremy want to be a group and try to come up with a list and present it to council?
I think you've kind of just done it. I mean, are there other things that we should be discussing for the next 45 minutes?
Well, I mean, it would, if we were going to go down that path, I would say, let's look at what are, like a historical list of complaints are that we've had and start with that. But definitely the things that we, we name. But I think that's part of a bigger project if we were going to look at that and.
Because we certainly could prepare what, what we've seen for complaints and the number of complaints.
I had a thought and then all of a sudden we got sidetracked.
What were we talking about just before then?
The worst contaminator.
I think I was, so in the past though, we were just looking at for every complaint when we did a sweep in an area.
We've done it both ways. So there have been years when the council has said, just do a sweep, just find all the violations, we want to get things cleaned up. And there have been other years where they've said, this is our priority and we should look for this. I know weeds was at one time.
Weeds was, the multiple violations was really our first big area that council wanted to look at because those had been those properties that had, that just weren't getting resolved. So multiple violations, weeds and then the signs were.
Yeah, and multiple violations tend to be the ones we've already gotten a complaint about. So that isn't, I probably as effective for you if you're, you know, depending what your goals are, it might be more effective to say junk vehicles, junk, weeds. What else do we get?
Wood, wood piles.
Yeah, wood piles and construction debris. Which happens a lot outside of the developments too.
Are we still doing sweeps in Maple Hills?
We ha, had been, I don't know that we current, we, I don't believe we currently did one in 2021. So if that's something that we'd like to continue to do an annual review of that area based on its density, we certainly could.
We had for a while, hadn't we?
We had annually before that.
Was that based on the desire of Barry or who? Or was it based on just complaints that we had?
I think it was a little bit of both. It was, it was a desire of the perk operator as well as we did receive complaints. So I think it was a, kind of a dual reason for doing it.
There are a number of those that are still working through the codes, court system, COVID really, you know.
That was the question I was lost in my head there. Where are we with Hennepin County? Are they starting to pick back up or are they still way behind?
They're still behind.
They're still behind, but they're at least starting to see some of the cases. I know.
They were just pushing these down the list, right?
Over and over and over.
Yes, but now they're starting to get court, court dates here in the next few months. So it's just taking a lot, a lot longer than anticipated.
I guess I would say we've got, you know, X number of dollars that we've allocated for this. I'd kind of rather see us take on the hard five. I don't know exactly which ones those would be. Rather that we already know our problems and have persistently been a problem, even if it's hard, versus trying to generate additional ones that are more willing to work with us. Just because I'm sure it's a, a bigger issue for the people who live in those areas to continue to see a lack of action. And eventually those would be resolved, hopefully they stay resolved, and then you can tick down the list. When you're in a point where you don't have these persistent problems that have been an issue for 20 years, then you can start to look at the next item on your Pareto chart.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, is if you, if you forget about the other ones and focus on the ones that are known, you may never get anywhere. I know there's one in my neighborhood that was in court for years, right? And it just kept getting pushed back and, you know, they just petitioned for further dates and more time. And there was an ownership question, you know, there was a lot of issues. And if you go by it today, it still looks like crap. It looks better than what it is. But it just took forever for it to get anywhere in that deal.
Problem there is we have been, if it's the one I'm thinking of, have been involved in code enforcement on that one. And there's not much else we can do there.
Right, once we turn it over to the court, it's with the court, right?
Yeah.
And then we have to deal with after effect after it has a judgment with the court, right? And that takes forever too, so.
So there's nothing in the code that we could modify to deal with those in a more proactive way?
My experience is that it's not the problem with the code, it's that when you get to court, the judge says, the city's right, you need to clean that up. You've got 90 days to clean it up or you could be found in contempt of court and subject to however many days in jail and however many fines. Then he goes home and doesn't do it and then we start the cycle over again. And they rarely get fined. I'm not familiar with anyone who ended up in jail. And those hard cases just have other issues. Sometimes mental health issues or other things that are just hard for those to clean up until those folks leave. Because the judge saying you have to clean it up doesn't clean it up. And then we're back to the whole, does the city want to go in and remediate it and take on that cost to do it? And at some point you may, there may be a site that you feel like is worth that and that we could talk with the city attorney about how, how to accomplish that, but.
Yeah, outside of safety, issues that create a public safety problem, I think it's tough to do that. And we also have to think about who we're sending in to do that and the angry man or that, you know, they might encounter.
I do have our nuisance ordinance up here on the screen. So the areas that we could, I'm trying to get, make it a little bigger here, thanks for your patience. for your patience, would be public obstruction nuisances, storage, parking.
When you bring up, when you bring up storage, it all of a sudden flipped me over, do we violate any of our own ordinances as the city audit Public Works, audit, do we do anything here that's wrong before we go after, we, we start doing things outside our realm? What are we doing inside our realm?
Sure, that's a great question. We try not to violate any of our ordinances, but I think there could potentially be a report, I don't wanna speak for certain, I think that-
I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw anybody on the bus, I just-
It's a good question.
Can we take out others, look just to double check everything there?
Yes, we can, we can certainly look at that and talk and try to meet any things that we might need to.
You know, if I shouldn't have brought that up, tell me, but I just-
No, it's a worthwhile question, I just don't-
Again, for me, I cleaned up my place, I think for the ordinances and stuff, and would love somebody to come down my driveway and tell me what I'm out of compliance on. But I, I worry about our Public Works, the old Public Works site, I mean, it's pretty well, I don't know what's going on behind the buildings or anything, but.
Those are all great, great questions that I think we should-
I interrupted you doing something up on the screen, I was about to-
Just showing our different, just talking about the different types of nuisances that we could, that we would want, i- if there were any things that we wanted to focus on, if there were any other focus areas. So we had a chance to have the ordinance up here.
You know, one, one thing, what Dean brought up is storage. And my understanding is shipping containers, Conex boxes are not allowed in the city. And so we had taken code enforcement on people that have them and they point to people in our commercial area that use them. But they're also becoming a popular storage thing these days, so.
Yeah, in industrial, commercial, I mean, we've even got the one out here behind the pine tree.
But, but even in, in a rural area?
A lot of people are starting to get them because they can't build a pole shed to move their stuff inside. I mean, there's all kinds of things going on.
They're airtight, rodentite, watertight, storage, that's affordable.
So you're saying maybe we look at changing the code for like, kinda like we did the previous one for certain zones?
It might, it might be a good idea.
Yeah, I'd be open to it.
So allowing or disallowing?
Of course, they're trying to avoid, they're doing it because they can't get more square footage, so they think they're getting away with something. Now they've got more square footage than the code allows. So that is one of the things that you, you mentioned, I just wanna point that out. But we do have that on our list. I think there is a difference between somebody like City Hall when you're using it for a temporary construction project. A lot of people do rent the pods, you know, you're gonna re-floor the house.
Right.
And you store everything in there, as opposed to somebody who brings a shipping inten- container into short, store junk. And we get a lot of complaints called in about their neighbors who have shipping containers in their yard.
I would think you'd want to disallow it, not allow it, because it basically is a shed at that point.
Bigger than a shed.
Well, do we limit sheds? So personal sheds that have no footing, we limit their size and how many you can have?
Not how many you can have, we don't have a limit on the number of buildings you can have, but we do count that towards square footage. The one exception in the code, I think, is fish houses. You can have a fish house that doesn't count as an accessory building, but it has to be under a certain size. And you also can't live in it, you can't.
Well, a fish house, a fish house is a licensed unit, right?
Well, remember back in the day before we had the-
It used to be on SKIDS and stuff, yeah.
I think that's what it's, but I don't know if anybody still has a fish house like that.
You can have a one fish house on property, it's not, that doesn't count, does not-
Is that a non-licensed fish house?
I really think it, I mean, I think it's-
And that should probably just be updated with, with, with modern fish house.
We do have this issue on our, you know, I keep saying this, but staff has a long list of things and this is one of them. It is, it is a challenge. People do love these shipping containers and when they own them, neighbors don't love them. And we get a lot of complaints about it. And to your, somebody's point, it is moving stuff theoretically into the container instead of the yard. The reality is most people that we flagged for that still have junk all over the yard.
Well, is it possible to- A lot of their good chunks in the shipping container.
I keep trying to find a way around this problem. Is there a way to issue citations from the police department for, you know, cash fees or fines for repeated violations and?
So we have discussed that in the past and there was a preference at the last time we discussed citations to not move forward with that route and I'd have to go back and look at what we, why we went that route, but we have discussed that. So that is a potential possibility, but there may not be speak to.
I did.
Well, I think it comes to like the public relationship with police, right, in that regard, but as far as shipping containers, I think we could do stuff around, incorporate them in your total size, if we incorporate them somewhat similar to a shed and then require a screening to them of some kind.
Do you want me to respond to the question about the-
Sure.
-stuff? So there is different philosophies in different cities as far as law enforcement's role in it. And I think where we've landed in the past here was that it was really, a lot of the nuisance stuff was a property performance standard that more aligned with, is this property in conformance with our city expectations? I think for that reason, it was handled under zoning enforcement because it really was focused on property enforcement. When we get to, while it is an ordinance, we really try, historically what we've tried to do is really focus our police efforts on the, you know, the life safety and also making sure that we, you know, there's a, there's a community relations aspect. It's code enforcement's never fun for anybody that has to do it, but it's an important part of keeping our community looking the way it wants to. So I think that's been the, the past philosophy and I really, I support it from the zoning standpoint, but I have also seen it in, you know, when I was in Staples, the police department was in charge of it. It really, it, it's a little bit outside of the zone of what typical law enforcement officers are accustomed to doing as well, saying, excuse me, sir, you need to cut your grass and your shed is, you know, you know, it's a movable property and it, it doesn't, I think it fits better in the zoning bucket, but it certainly is done in some places as a, as a local ordinance violation.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna see it changed ninety-five percent of the time. But we've been discussing the worst case properties where you've got a multi-year effort that hasn't been successful. Maybe that becomes a point of escalation so that there can be something effective done. I, I wouldn't wanna put that on the police department as a routine thing that you're always doing, but if it's one property a year, how would you feel about that?
So we've talked about this with our city attorney as well. And I think when it comes to, you know, once there's usually a court order for abatement in hand or things like that for, for the resolution of it, it's really common for law enforcement to stand by while that abatement takes place from a, a safety standard. It's just the difference of what role are they serving while they're there? Is it the, the actual follow-up and enforcement or is it a safety while it's abated? And so the city attorney during my conversations, I think, preferred it doing, you know, the enforcement and through zoning and then engage law enforcement as necessary on a per-property basis when it comes to the safe, you know, execution of either court orders or an enforcement action pursuant to a court order.
Well, thank you all for, for your feedback. It really helps us get ready for the next year. We'll work on, look at ways that we can do additional education for the community and then we'll move forward with the complaint based with a few areas that you've, you've outlined for us to keep, keep a close eye on.
Yeah, it might be a good idea, like Kim was saying, put it in a newsletter, right? At least have information on how to submit tips and-
We'll make sure that-
Or even just with the new mailer.
Yeah.
We have, we could send out something with a bill or whatever.
Did the quarter to go out, I assume?
It is, Shauna just handed it to me for final edits today. So it may be edited, the one that's printed on Monday, but-
Or we could send its own-
Yeah, we could send it with a, a bill or just-
We could send it with our utility bills, we could send out, at least to the, that be anyone who's connected.
You're not getting the-
Not getting everyone.
You're getting the people in developments in that regard.
We certainly could put it out on social media though and do something before the next newsletter and then, and then have that as a main topic.
And I don't, I don't want like to-
Summer newsletter when people are likely to be seeing those violations, summer, I think the summer newsletter would be great. We could even have that as a key topic.
Wanted to do a separate mailing, we could just-
Or we could do a separate mailing.
If it was important enough.
You would sometimes put a tip in there like, hey, did you know garbage cans need to be put away? You know?
Garbage cans need to get picked up.
Right. You get people that tend to leave them in front of their garage door for the whole week and stuff.
At the end of their driveway for, I don't know, there's two or three in the, in the community that they're at the end of their driveway and that's where it sits the whole while. And I just, I, I don't want all of a sudden everybody in the city start talking that council, mayor, administration is cracking down on ordinance and stuff. Hey, general cleanup folks, come on, let's, let's take pride in our city and let's, 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 let's make this place look good.
And I think that can be part of our education of why we're doing it. It's really to make sure that we're having a nice community and it's helpful for everyone's property values to have nice looking.
Yeah, it just, it needs to be-
It's a, go to many levels.
And to the enforcement person, I don't want that job.
We're thankful, Nicholas.
I am very thankful for what he has done.
There's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.